Please stand for the pledge and prayer.
My pledge of allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could stay standing for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come together as citizens to do the work for this great county that we live in, this great state, and this great country. We just would ask that you watch over all of us, protect us, and help us in the leadership positions to make the decisions that are best for everyone that lives in this county and this state. We just ask that you watch over the children. It's becoming springtime and there are going to be more and more people out, watch over children and everybody that's out and about with the weather changing to the way that we like it, warmer and nicer. So, once again, we just ask that you lead us, guide us, and help us in our decision. And it's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, welcome everybody back from spring break. All rested up and tanned.
Ready to go.
Ready to go back to work. So, do we have any special announcements or recognitions?
Well, thanks so.
Okay. We have approval of previous meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please make sure we get these signed.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Departmental Business and Reports. Community Corrections, Mr. Devong.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
I'm here with a new memorandum of understanding for ABER Health. I was just going to go ahead and hand you this MOU. This is the signed page. I will give you a brief explanation of some of the changes to our MOU. By the way, it's been reviewed by Mr. Wilson, been presented to our advisory board, and discussed with our judges, these changes. The primary changes in this memorandum, I'm understanding for this year, is a slight increase to drug screen, our drug screen costs. They were thirteen fifty per drug screen, thirteen dollars and fifty percent per drug screen. The increase is to fifteen dollars per drug screen. We had been as high as sixteen in the past. We were able to lower it. Now we're coming back just a little bit. Some of the things that we will gain a benefit from making these changes, we receive fifty free or drug screens at no cost to us to be provided by our drug testing provider. So, we have fifty free drug screens per month. We have a five percent allowance for confirmation drug testing. So, every hundred confirmations we do, we get five free. The confirmations are twenty dollars apiece. They're pretty significant in their cost. So, that's one of the things that we will be saving a little bit on. So, it's a give and take on this memorandum of understanding. Again, it's a year-to-year MOU. And I'd be willing to entertain any questions about our drug screening or drug screen processes or...
The fifty free that you guys are getting or going to get, how do we use those?
So, we typically allow officers to give what they call a voucher. If somebody doesn't have funds available or things like that, there are also the ability for us to give a voucher as an incentive. So, if somebody's been doing well, they could get a free drug screen for that month. The other is, from time to time, the courts will order us to do drug screens on civil cases and other cases for the court. They want an instant resolve, which we then do the drug screen in-house and we would, we take care of it all from there. Now, we'll be able to send them over to ABER Health and now we're not taking up our staff's time.
How much, what's our reimbursement rate on these?
So, the primary cost of drug screening is for the participant. The participant pays the bill upfront. We do pay for confirmation drug screens. So, there's a certain number of drug screens right now that we're paying for. We pay for about sixty drug screens for vouchers. We're paying for the vouchers right now. We're paying those out of pocket per month. It's, it averages, I can't say it averages. When I've looked, it's been between fifty and sixty, sometimes a little bit higher on our voucher. We pay for those out of our user fees for our programs. And the confirmations are also supposed to be paid for by our participants. So, say a participant tests positive for a substance. They claim they have not used that substance. They're given the opportunity to have that confirmed. If, and if it still comes back positive with the testing done, the further testing done, then we know that that is a positive drug screen. If it comes back negative, we know that that was a positive, a false positive drug screen. But, on those where, say I have a person on probation, they test positive, I'm at the point where I'm going to file a violation with the court, this person refuses to pay for the confirmation drug screen, we still have to pay for it. If we're going to send it to the court, it has to be a confirmed drug screen. We can't send a drug screen based on the initial test to court without either an admission or confirmation. So, those are a lot of our costs. We're paying, depending on the program. So, we have multiple programs inside of our drug testing program. We have adult probation, we have community corrections, we have our problem-solving courts, we have a bunch of different entities that are inside of our drug screening and it's all laid out in this MOU. Our adult probation, right now, I think our drug screen costs for user fees is costing about a thousand dollars a month, maybe a little bit more than that. It runs two to three hundred dollars in our community corrections. It's higher out-of-pocket cost for our problem-solving courts because problem-solving courts don't charge fees for drug screens through certain levels, depending on which program. So.
Thank you.
I'm sure you get a lot of people say, "No, I didn't use." Do you get very many false positives?
Well, it depends on the substance. It's not a common occurrence. So, one of the things that we've come across in the last year or two is fentanyl is something that's, it has a higher rate of false positivity. It's because the screen is so sensitive that it may catch other substances or may catch different chemical combinations within the urine. These are almost all urine drug screens. We do some oral. But, from my understanding, fentanyl has the higher of the false positive rates on the initial drugs. But, they describe it to me as a, you know, like, because I'm fairly simple. They describe it to me as like a kid's block where you're trying to fit shapes inside of this box, right? So, you're trying to fit each shape into this box. This shape equals this substance. And if you make the shape big enough, the hole cut out, you can fit more shapes out into that same hole. It doesn't have to be the same one, right? So, that's, that's kind of the idea of the false positivity. Doesn't necessarily mean it's negative. It just means it's not positive with that substance.
That's where the confirmation comes in.
Yes. That's where you send it for the mass spectrometry.
Any other questions?
I have a motion to accept the ABER Health MOU as presented and authorize you as president to sign it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, we'll go ahead and sign this.
Thank you.
You do, sir? You too? Okay, moving on to the maintenance department. Mr. Stone Street.
Good afternoon, and this is a huge project, say the least. But, for the heat pump project for the Howard County Jail, I have a final proposal from Evap, validated custom solutions for the purchase of this equipment. This purchase would include sixty-nine heat pumps from Water Furnace, three DOAS dedicated outdoor air systems, makeup air systems from manufactured by Warner Furnace. That would include two Camus condensing boilers. It would include two Armstrong variable frequency drive pumps and their, that does not include the installation, and their motors for twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then, in addition, four inches of plastic fill inside our cooling tower, actually, six inches of plastic fill inside our cooling tower. The total price for all of this is eight hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. We will then request bids for the installation part of the project. If you agree to purchasing this equipment, I have a form here that would need a signature on page two. By no means any rush to sign onto this, but there's been a lot of work, a lot of discussion. And so far, over this, it's good equipment, it's needed. The equipment that we have out there is thirty-two years old. It's time to do something. This will also include the new four fifty-four B refrigerant.
So, these heat pumps are all the new refrigerant?
Every single one of them.
I guess, you know, I just really struggle with this because, no disrespect to anybody in this room, or I know you do your job and the sheriff does his job. At Kinsey, we have fifty-four heat pumps or something similar to that. We kept a record of every one that was changed over the course of years. I just, all of them have to be changed at once. That's what I'm saying. I know some of these heat pumps at the jail have been changed before.
The compressors, yes.
The compressors have been changed. So, I'm saying, all of them have to be changed, you know, we're, you know, some next five years, we're going to, five, ten years down the road, we're building a new jail.
Exactly.
Now, the old jail can be repurposed. I understand that and get that. This is a really huge commitment when I, I guess I just don't, I'm not pointing to, we've had a lot of different maintenance people and it's not you, you don't, you know, it's not sheriff, it's whatever. How many new compressors have we put in compared to?
I'd say we average about three a year lately, three to four. Exactly what ones? I have no record. I just, I have zero record over that.
You put those in, Bill? Do you put the new Freion in those or?
No, you cannot do that.
The old stuff.
You have to go back with R-22. Those are engineered for R-22 refrigerant, which is sixteen hundred dollars for thirty pounds right now. When I started this, it was thirty-five.
We're not talking just the compressors here, are we?
We're going to take, and Eric, just like if you did a swap at your house, we're going to take this whole unit out, get the refrigerant out of it, sell it, and then we're going to scrap it. It is wore out. And then, put a brand-new R-454B. It's going to have frequency drive motors in it. You're going to have on-off for water flow. They're so efficient compared to what, it's the Space Shuttle compared to the Model T. There's, the energy savings alone is going to vastly help pay for this. I don't recommend doing this possibly if you're not going to use the building anymore, but I don't think that's going to happen. I'm sure this building has a reuse purpose and it's a long way off until that would happen. These inmates aren't going to go anywhere. And it's something I believe that if we're going to repurpose this building, we need to do.
What's the rate of failure right now? What's going on today with these?
I couldn't tell you. I'm not out there every day, but I know we put one in last week. We put a new compressor in last week and we, that's when we had to purchase that R-22 at sixteen hundred dollars. We were out of it.
That's crazy.
They're each unit, ninety-six units hold six pounds. So, that thirty-pound can won't last very long when they start failing. And, and they are. And we're going to start having pinholes in the evaporators. And it's just their abuse, it's not their abuse, it's that their usage is very high, especially in the summer. And you've got, I don't know how many BTUs a human puts off, but you pack them in there like that. Each one of those units is doubling itself. So, it's doing eight cells. So, you know, they are overworked, especially in the hot months.
Now, this has been discussed?
Incazzed.
Hashed, rehashed.
The one thing I can offer is you can purchase twenty of these at a time. They wouldn't have any problem doing that. It's, this is, the installation phase of this is going to be huge. And then, you're going to be installing them. You're going to be bringing a crew in with all their equipment to get to these where they want to be and get the old ones out. You're going to be paying for that setup fee several times to do this. The interstation, I don't know if you've ever walked through there, it's going to be quite a chore to do those. The ceilings, you're going to have to take out quite a bit of the ceiling grid to get them in and out. And then, you do that several times and then the ceilings, and then you're replacing the whole ceiling grid. The makeup air units especially are critical to keeping the other ones from working so hard. If you have a big unit that kind of watches, you know, watches over the space temperature that the other ones are operating out of and conditions that air initially before the other ones take over and condition the cells or the offices. Two of those are down. They don't work anymore.
What's, what's your lead time on if you, if you order this?
If I order these, we could, we could have the project done by the end of the year possibly, done. They're going to start taking orders now. They just, now that April first was the first day that we're going to start taking orders of these, taking orders on these. We've talked over the logistics of phasing in the units as needed so they wouldn't manufacture sixty-nine units all at once where they can do twenty at a time and then we'll install those and they'll manufacture the next twenty. Water Furnace can manufacture all these in about three-quarters of a shift. So, there, it's not a big deal for them to manufacture.
Where are these manufactured at now?
Port Wayne, Indiana, on the south side, right by the airport. And they're adding, they're becoming so popular that their demand is increasing quite a bit. They're adding one hundred and forty thousand square feet to the facility right now. We walked through the building on a tour. It, it, it's good equipment and it's talked highly about through a lot of the vendors as being good equipment.
And then, do you have a ballpark on installation?
I would imagine, if I were to guess, it'd double this price. It's a very hard installation. There's going to be damage in, damage out to the building, the ceiling grids. It's, it's going to be a chore. It'll be fun though.
Questions, comments?
There is no reason to rush if you need to, you can kick it around.
I guess that's what I would probably like to take this under advisement.
Okay, fine.
Okay, you make this motion.
There's a motion, yes. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we table that?
Absolutely.
Next meeting.
I think that's a good decision. The next would be the Highway Dry Storage Barn. We got the siding off of that and found quite a bit of rot. And it's not terrible. One pole was actually fell when they were ripping off the siding. So, they repaired that, made some repairs to some other poles. Some of the GRTs is what they call them, the horizontal boards that they actually attach the siding to were rotten, so those needed replaced. I have a request for it not to exceed seven thousand dollars to make these repairs. I think that's way over what we're going to need, but I just want to make sure I didn't have to come back. This barn is certainly worth seven thousand, additional seven thousand dollars. I would like to pay for that from eleven thirty-eight point four seven two four one, my Coombe Cap Building Repair Account.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This next one, we've had quite a few fistfights in the penthouse over it. But, electric plus and urn and QPH kind of missed some conduit that needed move to facilitate a large door we installed. It was missed in the planning phase of this. I can see how it was missed. It was probably two feet into the hole. But, we had to move that conduit so we could get the door in there, get the hole in there, get the door in there and get the heat exchangers in and out. Some additional wiring was needed to be done. They were elevator wiring, so we had to do it on a weekend because there were so many jury trials going on. So, there is an additional fee of two thousand five hundred dollars on the electrical upgrade or change of that courthouse chiller. I would like to pay for that from eleven thirty-eight point four seven two four three, my Building Upgrades Coombe Cap Account.
That's one of those things that just had to be done.
They had to do it either way. It just got missed somehow. It was a pretty extensive proposal for that installation.
I'll make that motion as well. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
The motion has passed.
The last one is Waste Management. We're contracted to do, they have new personnel there. We have new personnel here. Somehow, nobody contacted me to let us know our contract expired as they traditionally had done. I do have a proposal from Waste Management for their fees for our trash removal. I can shop around. In the past, when I shopped around, the prices were, and on average, what we're paying now, what was always the kicker was the thirty-yard roll-off. Waste Management's been extremely flexible with us on that one as far as being over the top with some trash. The Highway Department uses the five-yard payloader to kind of compact that trash in there. Most of the vendors would absolutely freak out if they saw us doing that. So, that's kind of nice to deal with Waste Management. They've been very lax on us as far as that aspect's concerned. If we ever had to change the contract, it was not a problem to drop service, add service, whatever, with no additional fees. I'd kind of like to go back with them, but if you would like for me to shop around some, I can certainly do that. But, I do have a contract that would, that you could sign now and we can go back under another three-year contract with Waste Management.
We've been under Waste Management for quite a while.
As long as I've been here. Wabash Valley popped in and out somewhere and I actually think Work Release has something different over there that they pay for. But, overall, we've always been with Waste Management.
Questions?
Alan said, Alan's...
Alan's looked over the contract and he's, he's, he's okay with it. It's kind of Alan's old wording that's in the contract.
Questions or comments?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the contract. Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And one more side note on that chiller. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
No, go ahead.
The last Wednesday, that thing is up and operational now. So, thank you and one former commissioner for getting us there. That is a remarkable piece of engineering. It runs great. It'll look beautiful up there. It weighs about half as much as the other and we're really proud of it. Tech bear should be too. That's an amazing machine up there.
This requires one signature, so I'm asking for your approval to sign this.
Yeah, good. Make that part of the motion. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We all had one question. You didn't, on the first one with eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, you didn't, you didn't have an account to pay for that from?
No.
Oh, I didn't. I should ask. I wanted to get that one.
Bill, do you need this back?
Yep.
You always tell us what you're going to pay and someone else.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is Planning Commission, Mr. Shealan.
Hello. I have seven items before you tonight. They should go pretty quick.
Seven.
You said, you guys are going to have to get your PIMS ready. There's lots to sign. The first item is a rezoning. It's ordinance twenty twenty-four BCCO fourteen. It's a rezone at sixteen forty-five east, five fifty north. It's from agricultural to rural residential. And our next case will be a subdivision to match this rezoning.
Okay. Any questions or comments on?
Any, any?
No remonstrance.
Was there anyone who's?
No.
Anyone in public speaking on this or anything?
No.
Okay.
As far as I know.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the next case is case one.
Can we sign these afterwards and get them to you?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Since we have so many?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Greg.
So, the next case is case one CP twenty-four. It's the subdivision for the rezoning we just did. Again, at sixteen forty-five east, five fifty north. It's a one lot subdivision. And again, no remonstrance.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Anyone care to speak on this? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion's passed.
My next case is ordinance twenty twenty-four BCCO fifteen. It's a rezone thirty-one oh one east, two hundred south. Again, it's from agricultural to rural residential. No remonstrance.
Questions or comments?
No. Make that motion to accept. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anyone care to speak on this? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
That one has passed.
So, the next case is case two CP twenty-four. It's a Willis Acres subdivision at thirty-one oh one east, two hundred south. Property we just rezoned. Again, it's a one lot subdivision. No remonstrance.
That's good. Motion accept. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there anyone to speak on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's passed.
My next case is ordinance twenty twenty-four BCCO sixteen, a rezone at eighty-seven seventeen east, one hundred south. And again, that's from agricultural to rural residential. No remonstrance at the meeting.
Make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anyone to speak on this? All in favor?
Aye.
My motion's passed.
My next item is case three CP twenty-four. It's the subdivision, Elkin subdivision. Again, this is eighty-seven seventeen east, one hundred south, one lot subdivision. No remonstrance.
Make a motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone to speak on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion has passed.
The last case I have is, it's ordinance twenty twenty-four BCCO seventeen. It's a rezone at forty-four seventy-seven north, fifty east from agricultural to C two. A petitioner, I believe, wants to put a balk landscaping business in at this location. And if I remember correctly, there was no remonstrance at the meeting.
Nothing.
Questions? Comments?
I'll make the motion to accept. Second. That's right.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone to speak on this? Are you all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
My motion has passed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank Mr. Shealan. We can move on to new business. North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council. Good evening.
Good day. Good evening. Got a couple of updates for you and then a couple of items for you to consider. First things first would be our annual dashboard. Regional Planning Council, they call this, starting in late twenty fourteen. So, over the course of the last nine years, that upper left-hand block shows you we've brought more than twenty-two million dollars into our six counties. That's just our normal day-to-day operations. The block off to the right shows that where the funds are allocated across the six counties. And that, that graph also includes the thirty million dollar Ready Program. Ready One Program. Bottom left-hand corner, you can see that we had twenty-one projects in Ready One, thirty million dollars, three billion dollars in total investment. And then, we've got a list of Howard County projects that are part of that program. The broadband expansion, that is about ninety-nine point nine percent complete. We're going to be closing that out here shortly. The Turning Point Drop-In Center, that's about ninety-five percent complete. The Industrial Park is about seventy-five percent complete. And then, the other projects are still in development, yet to draw. Overall, we've seen ballpark about seven point two, seven point four million of our thirty million hit the street to date, so we're... So we're in the neighborhood of about twenty-five percent of our ready funds are out the door. Uh, Ready Two point O will be announced April eleventh. We'll, we'll find out if, if and how much we're going to be awarded, and then there'll be a, a, a working process with the state to identify the projects that we have gotten in that Ready Two point O pipeline. That'll be in April, May, maybe even an early June process. Um, and then off to the, the lower right, that just kind of shows the, the direct impact. We've worked over a hundred and thirty-five projects. Fourteen dollars, uh, return on investment, eleven dollars per capita. So, uh, just gives you an idea of what we've been able to accomplish over the last nine years. We celebrate our 10th anniversary here in October, so certainly appreciate, appreciate, uh, the county's support. Any questions regarding the dashboard?
This has been a tremendous asset to the region, but also to our county. We appreciate all your work on this.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, the next item is, we have to put together a comprehensive economic development strategy, and it needs to be updated every five years. Our first one was completed before the Regional Planning Council in two thousand and twelve. It was updated in seventeen, and then we just updated it, uh, at the end of last year. So, uh, basically, the, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs, is, is our, uh, our guidebook for the next five years and, and gives us a, a, a path for the Regional Planning Council to focus our attention, and also, um, helps our local communities and the region when we're applying for grants. They always want to know if we've, we've done our planning. And so we took that two thousand and seventeen SEDs, parlayed that into our Ready One plan. We updated our Ready One plan as we were putting together our Ready Two application and, and just kind of combined that into our, our SEDs update that you have in front of you. Our board approved it, um, back in January, and I'm making the rounds, asking for our, our counties to, uh, approve the SEDs as the regional document, and you've got a resolution with that that I'd ask for you to consider and, and approve. We just need a resolution number. What resolution?
Twenty twenty-four dash BCCR dash zero seven.
BCCR?
Zero seven.
Dash zero seven, yeah. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read this, Stephen, if I may. Do the Howard County Commissioners approve in the twenty twenty-four five-year comprehensive economic development strategy? Whereas the U.S. Economic Development Administration requires the submission of a comprehensive economic development strategy to maintain eligibility for EDA grant and loan programs. Whereas the counties of North Central Indiana, which includes Cass, Clinton, Fulton, Howard, Miami, and Tipton, have engaged in a collaborative public planning process to upgrade the region's CEDS. Whereas the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council, the CEDS committee has reviewed the twenty twenty-four CEDS and find that it reflects the development needs of North Central Indiana. Whereas the twenty twenty-four CEDS of North Central Indiana shall serve as the regional strategy for the six counties in North Central Indiana with each county's concurrence. Whereas the NCIRPC Board of Directors approved the twenty twenty-four CEDS on January ninth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the counties of North Central Indiana have engaged this NCIRPC to implement the CEDS and to provide other programs and services necessary for local and regional growth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners approve the twenty twenty-four CEDS to meet the eligibility requirements for the grant and loan program administered by the U.S. Economic Development Administration and pledge continued financial support to the NCIRPC adopted this first day of April, twenty twenty-four, Howard County Commissioners.
And make that motion as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
This is adopted. Thank you, Stephen, for...
What the last?
...doing all this, and, you know, it's been such an economic boost to, to the region and our county.
Well, I certainly appreciate that.
And we're looking for great things out of Ready Two point O.
So are we. So are we. One, one last item. Uh, as a result of Ready One, and what we've been doing, um, our legal counsel suggested that our county's hearing the service contract. It's a benefit not only to Regional Planning Council, but also our individual county. So, um, we've put together a, a draft contract. It's a two-year contract, um, for your consideration.
What we probably want to do is have our legal counsel review this, and then we can get that back to you if that's okay.
Nope, that's great. And then I think the last thing, um, is...
Of course.
The invoice for twenty twenty-four. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Any other new business? Hey, we're ready for claims and reports. Moving on to salary claims.
One million, one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Payroll expense.
One million, one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Operating claims.
One million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Do we have claims to ratify?
None.
Uh, monthly reports?
None.
Grants?
None.
Wow.
Okay. Next is Mr. Wilson.
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bray.
I have nothing.
Mr. Lipinski.
Just got, uh, Mr. Wilson just to give me information that the hearing of the Stevens property has been continued to May first. A lot of the residents in that area have contacted me on a weekly basis to want this resolved, and that's a very big issue, so I've been telling them all May first.
Been a while, haven't. Okay. Are there any public comments? Give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Tim Hinton. I live at seventy-three eighty East, four hundred South. I have some pictures here for you. My concerns is about the rock quarry that's going in in Tipton County and testing in Howard County. Our, this is a green arrow. The blue square, they've already got the gravel down. They're started. What I've been told, they're supposed to start bla- blasting in June or July. And in the red square, I hear it's Martin Marietta. Not sure. They're out there drilling right now and testing. And our concern is with our house, not only, but our neighbors, our wells. My well is sixty foot deep. Our concern is water quality, water level, you know, they're, from what I've read up on it, rock quarries, stone quarries are not responsible if your well goes dry. I'm talking to the insurance company that they are not covered underneath insurance. And on top of that, we have to sign up for earthquake insurance to cover on our property for any damage blasted. And from talking to the couple of neighbors around there that's real close to the one in Tipton, they're expecting three hundred truckloads a day.
So where do you live in relationship?
The green arrow, right up here, right up at the top of the page, right underneath where it says north. From what we're told, from talking to the neighbors and people, it's close to the one in Tipton. They've been a medical-grade level of limestone found, and it runs straight north from that blue square. And they've been talking about taking that field straight towards north of the blue square. There are already gravel on the ground. I mean, they're really moving on the one in Tipton.
We knew about the one in Tipton.
And they're, they're probably drilling four or five different areas we, that we drive by, you know, the one with the red square. And they're out there drilling all over the place, testing.
So you, you, you live on State Road twenty-six?
Yes, right on twenty-six.
And approximately from the one in Tipton, you're how far?
We're one mile straight north of the one in Tipton.
Mr. Shealan, do you have anything to say about this?
I was hoping to be aware of it when some neighbors told.
Yeah, a wife talked to you one time.
Talked to me about it. Uh, I, I reached out, found out what I could. Uh, the only thing that I know, I was told it was all going to be contained in Tipton County. While we're drilling here, I have no idea. My suggestion would be maybe one of you Commissioners could reach out to the Commissioners in Tipton County to get some more information, because I honestly don't know much about it.
Yeah, the, the red square I'm hearing is Martin Marietta.
Well, like I said, I, I knew about the one in Tipton County, because I've talked to the Commissioners there, but over in Howard County, now that's...
Yeah, I got one picture. You can see. I had heard of it, didn't I?
That Martin Marietta was getting ready to cease operations, is what I'd heard.
Right there, that, this red square, you can see where they're out there. There's the water, and I mean, it's dirty. This is one in Howard County. They got enough. This is one piece of equipment for the water tank. Probably had a grill in there. Guy's back there in that corner, right there, drilling there. They're drilling all over. From what I was told, talking to the one, the neighbors right adjacent to the one in Tipton County, it's supposedly one of the biggest limestone deposits that are found in the state of Indiana. It was down like three hundred feet last year in Tipton County and still in. What I hear, they, the life of a rock quarry that goes by the years, they can produce product off of it. Like the one out in Normal, Indiana, they was like a forty-six-year rock quarry, and they're expecting this to be like a hundred to thirty-five years. That's the one in Tipton. Now, the one in Howard County, I haven't got much information on it yet.
So is this an extension of the one in Howard County?
No, the one in Tipton is actually owned by a guy out of Tennessee.
Okay.
He sold his rock quarry down there to start this one.
But I, but I, what I'm asking, the, the one here in the red, is this an extension of the existing Martin Marietta?
I don't know. And like I said, that's just hearsay. I heard that Martin Marietta is the one out there drilling.
It would kind of, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, it would kind of make sense, you know, but I don't know. I'm going to make a phone call to Martin Marietta.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're concerned about our well, especially ours only being sixty foot deep. And I know that because I just had to replace the pipe and the footbath down the bottom, and...
Stone quarries use a lot of water.
They use a lot of water, and it's going to drop that water table.
We'll make a phone call.
Jack, if you want, I'd be more than happy to make that phone call with you.
Okay.
We can try to get to...
Don't know if they'll tell us anything, understand that.
Right, I understand that, but, you know, I just, one, wanted to make you guys aware that we are testing in Howard County now. And there are quite a few people, well, everybody out there, oh, well, there's no city water, the city sewer. We're not even in Taylor's sewer.
All we can do is ask, Reagan and I'll make that phone call together.
That's all I did. Wanted to present it and follow up later.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Sometime the elected officials are last to know.
Absolutely. But, yeah, we just don't know. Well, I know I tracked it down a little bit. I guess DNR is responsible for some water, water table levels, so that's... I'm going to make a phone call to them, too. I tried today, couldn't get through. Want to talk to somebody, make sure they're aware of what's going on. See if they need to do any testing to find out what the water levels are versus what they are once they start blasting.
Good question.
And if I may, I have another concern off that topic. We have a lot of accidents out on nineteen, one hundred South, two hundred South, three hundred South, Center Road. You go through Tipton County, they have these stoplights or stop signs, solar powered, and they flash. I'm wondering how come with all these accidents, we had a friend a year ago, lost their mother at their one hundred. And I think they've been free since then, their accident. Wondering how come we don't have these flashing stop signs at them intersections? They ran off solar power. I know they cost more to put in to start with, but seems to be the rate of accidents that we have at them intersections, some looking.
We will ask our highway superintendent to, yes, some of the roads, like nineteen, those state.
Right.
Understand.
Well, it would be on the county's side.
But we will have our highway superintendent.
I don't know how the easements work on each side of it.
Come and talk about that.
I think, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and ID.
Joe Smith? No.
We don't, we don't know who you are.
Lee Oliver, fifty-seven sixty-eight West, there's a Joe North South. Um, I had no clue he was coming up here talking about water, but that's something I'm going to, uh, bring up, too. Um, I just got printed out one. It's an ordinance from Tipton County. And these are articles out of Fox fifty-nine, talking about the Indiana Finance Authority that has been given the task of, uh, looking into the water issues, especially through, uh, as you've probably all heard, the LEAP project in, in Boone County. And, uh, they're looking at, as you'll notice there, that's highlighted, uh, Howard County, they're looking at also. And along with the water issue, uh, you know, like you said, you know, again, I didn't know about this, but, um, you know, there's... I would like to see the Commissioners create some type of ordinance to protect the homeowners. A lot of these projects are in the city right now, but it's, it's possible that it will affect, you know, whether they start digging for, you know, drilling for water. Uh, it may affect some of those homeowners out there. I live just right, used to live just right north of, of where they're putting in the battery plant on four fifty North. Actually, they took out part of my project, part of my property and made a, you know, a dead end on four fifty North there going to thirty-one. But, uh, I would suggest that, like I said, Commissioners come up with some type of ordinance to, you know, protect the water. Uh, there's, and I don't, I just started looking this evening, but there's a number of counties that are involved with that. You see, there's thirteen, there's fifteen more that's been added. Uh, again, you know, talking about protecting the health, welfare, and safety. How many times have you heard that last, uh, three or four years? Uh, but, uh, now, like I said, I, I just, you know, think you ought to look into it, because, you know, they start, you know, don't know, they, I lack, so laid hands on the gas line that they come in there. I mean, twenty-four...
they come in there, I mean, a twenty-four inch gas line, if they're going to start putting water in, you know, for the battery plants, or if it's a, uh, you know, talking about stone quarry, you're talking about a chip manufacturer, uh, you know, who knows? You know, where are they going to get the water from? And how's it going to affect other people's wells in that area? Okay.
No, thank you for sharing this.
I had some nice.
Any other public comment? I hear none. Then we stand for adjournment.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand in adjournment.